Good evening and welcome to the August 18th, 2020 Lone Tree City Council meeting. We will wait till 7:05 to formally begin our meeting to allow people to connect virtually to the meeting. While we're waiting, I'll quickly run through the ways that we can, you can participate, the public can participate in our meeting this evening. In support of the social distancing requirements and based on space limitations in our buildings, the city is limiting physical attendance at public meetings to essential staff, applicants, and elected officials, and will continue to provide access to public meetings via electronic participation. All attendees are required to wear face coverings when entering and exiting the building and within six feet of another person. The city will also implement symptom monitoring measures for attendees such as temperature checks and completion of the city's facility health screening survey before entering the meeting. During our virtual meetings, there are three ways that public comment may be made. First, comments that were submitted in writing prior to the meeting will be forwarded to the city council and included in the official meeting minutes. If you would like to type a public comment during the public comment portion of the agenda, click Ask a Question in the sidebar of the virtual meeting and enter your name and address in the message window along with your public input. Your name and comment will be forwarded to the city council and included into the official meeting minutes. Your name will not be seen by the public. It will be in the minutes, however. If you would like to speak to council live using your telephone, please indicate that in the Ask a Question box and submit your name, address, and phone number. You will receive a call back from the city to hear your public comment. All public comment should be directed to city council, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Again, we are waiting to officially begin our meeting until 7:05 to allow for the public to connect virtually this evening. So we do have a couple minutes of brief pause, so thanks for your patience. Again, if you're just joining us, we are waiting till 7:05 to officially start our meeting to allow time for the public to connect virtually. You're at the Lone Tree, August 18th, 2020, City Council meeting, and we will begin the formal meeting at 7:05. Those final 15 seconds are the longest, so good evening again. Welcome to the Lone Tree City Council meeting. It is August 18th, 2020. We begin our meeting at 7:05 to allow the public to connect virtually. I am opening our regular meeting. We are all, all of council is in attendance, and there is a quorum present. There are no amendments to the agenda. It is, it stands as published. If you would all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any conflicts of interest?
None.
Have we received any notifications for public comment? Nothing came in writing ahead.
Right, Mayor, we've received no public comments in advance.
So while we wait to see if anybody would like to participate, and again, I want to remind you of the three ways you can participate in public comment. Comments that were submitted in writing prior to the meeting will be forwarded to council for our review and entered into the official meeting minutes. If you would like to type a public comment during the public comment section, which is now, please go to the Ask a Question box in the sidebar of your virtual meeting, enter your name and address in the message window along with your public comment. Your name and comments will be forwarded to city council and included into the official meeting minutes. And if you would like to speak to council live using your telephone, please indicate that in the Ask a Question box, include your name, address, and phone number, and the city will call you back to hear your comment live. All comments should be directed to council. Again, please limit them to three minutes, and we would like to remind you that this is not a question and answer period, but this is the time for you to provide feedback to council, and we will take any action or direction through our staff at this point. Thank you. Well, have we heard from anybody?
No, Mayor, we've received no requests for public comment.
Okay, well, we're going to let people continue to have the opportunity as I review the upcoming announcements about our events, so we will, if you have a public comment, we'll, and still are trying to connect, we'll check in one more time on that. All right, so what is happening in this city lots? So Visual Arts in the Afternoon, First Ladies of Jazz with Mary Louise Lee will be Wednesday, tomorrow, August 19th, at 1:30. Tunes on the Terrace, Soul X will be Friday, August 28th, at 8:00 p.m. at the Lone Tree Arts Center Terrace Theater. This is an outdoor live performance. Tunes on the Terrace, Set Sail Yacht Rock will be Saturday, August 29th, at 8:00 p.m. again at the Lone Tree Arts Center Terrace Theater, live performance, weather permitting, I should say. There is a Bluffs 8K Trail Run scheduled for this Sunday, yes, it is this Sunday, August 23rd, at 7:30 a.m. at the Lone Tree Recreation Center, and we are having a community blood drive Wednesday, August 26th, from 11:00 to 3:45 p.m. at the Lone Tree Arts Center at our event hall. Please visit the city for website, excuse me, please visit the city website for signup information. Okay, I'll check back in to see if anybody has requested to speak with council.
I'm not seeing any requests, Mayor.
All right, well, thank you. I'm going to close our comment period now. I'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the August 4th, 2020, regular city council meeting, claims to the period of July 27th to August 10th, 2020, and the June 2020 Treasurer's Report. I will ask council for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to our Public Works Agenda, 8.1, a public hearing on Ordinance 20-05, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Articles 1 through 5 of Chapter 15 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code concerning storm drainage, grading, erosion, and sediment control, and flood plain development, adopting such articles and the codes adopted therein by reference and providing penalties for violations. This is second reading, and I am going to open our public hearing, and I will turn to Jacob James from our staff for the presentation. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council. The item you have before you tonight is an ordinance to amend Chapter 15 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code related to flood plains. Slide, please. So what you have before you this evening is an ordinance to adopt new flood insurance study and regulatory floodplain maps by FEMA, some code cleanup and additions, and implementation of two higher regulatory standards. So the Federal Emergency Management Agency will adopt a new flooded insurance study for several jurisdictions, including the city of Lone Tree, effective September 4th of this year. The city is also responsible for adopting the same study with the same effective date. The new flood insurance study adopts new floodplain delineations for Happy Canyon Creek and Badger Gulch, with the main caveat being there's no substantial changes to either floodplain, there are just some minor increases in areas and minor decreases in areas. So the flood insurance study update was based on a Happy Canyon Creek major drainage way planning study commissioned by the Mile High Flood District and local governmental partner agencies, and that occurred in 2014. And that example map here shows the changes I talked about, some increases and some decreases, the orange indicating where the floodplain will shrink, and the pink indicates where it will expand minorly. So FEMA did go through a public process for this flood insurance study. They provided notification on June 15th of 2017. There was a statutory 90-day appeal period that started on June 29th of 2017, and during that period FEMA did not receive any appeals to the proposed flood hazard determination. So along with this update, staff did identify some portions of the code that can be cleaned up based on how the city is operating. One is just changing the address of the municipal building for the Public Works Department, which is now internalized. Another one is requiring digital signatures of applications rather than duplicate paper copies in an effort to go paperless. Additional code cleanups and additions, staff did identify an area where the current code allows for equipment and storage yards as an acceptable use within the floodplain. That use is not currently in the floodplain, it's not anticipated to be in the floodplain in the future, so staff is recommending striking this from an acceptable use from the code. Staff also identified inconsistencies with the penalties for violations with other portions of the code, so the recommendation here is to change the penalty for this section of the code from $1,000 to $2,650 to be consistent with other portions of the code. And then also, under uses prohibited, staff is recommending prohibiting tents, makeshift structures, enclosures, or other shelters used for human habitation except in locations expressly permitted by the floodplain administrator, and having adequate sanitation facilities and flood evacuation plans. And now to the higher regulatory standards, staff is proposing two additional higher regulatory standards, the first one being two feet of freeboard. Currently, the requirement for freeboard is one foot for all structures and two feet for critical structures. The proposed change would be two feet of freeboard for all structures within the floodplain. Slide, please. The impact of this change to the code is little to no development impact due to the fact that structures are not generally allowed within the floodplain to begin with. So this just makes the code cleaner across the board if this instance were ever to occur, but we do believe that it'd be very rare for council to actually have this in front of them. A benefit would be if the city ever were to participate in the community rating system, this higher regulatory standard would provide a benefit to residents if they were to purchase flood insurance through a discount by having stricter code. Slide, please. So the second higher regulatory standard that staff is proposing is zero-foot floodway. This would essentially mean that any fill or activity in the fringes of the floodplain would have to result in no rise to the base flood elevation. Currently, code allows a half a foot floodway, which is the standard laid out by the state of Colorado, and with this proposed change, Lone Tree would take it just a step further to go to zero foot of rise for the floodway. Again, the impact and benefit to this is minimal for development due to the fact that very few activities are allowed to be implemented within the floodplain. However, it does provide an opportunity for some minor grading as long as there is no rise to the base flood elevation. If there is, it's normally commissioned through a flood map provision that would go through the FEMA process. Again, the same benefit, though, if a resident were to purchase flood insurance and the city were in the community rating system, they would experience a discount on their insurance premium. So with that, happy to answer any questions for council or open it up to the public.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council on this? We have been briefed in study session and in first reading, so again, I think moving to the higher regulatory standard is always a good thing, well, almost always a good thing, but we hope to never need it because we don't allow building in the floodplain. So those are the bottom line. I think it's the seatbelt and the, or the belt and the suspenders, so to speak. So I don't have any questions. This is a public hearing, though, so I will see if there has been any requests for public comment.
No, Mayor, we don't have any requests for public comment.
Okay, and I think they had fair warning on this one, so I will close the public hearing, and I will look for a motion from council.
I move to adopt Ordinance 20-05, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Articles 1 through 5 of Chapter 15 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code concerning storm drainage, grading, erosion, and sediment control, and floodplain development, adopting such articles and the codes adopted therein by reference, and providing penalties for violations on second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, and again, thank you very much. Great presentations over the course of this. All right, moving on to community development, public hearing on Ordinance 20-06, an ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code concerning subdivisions on first reading. This is a public hearing, which I will open. And now I will look to council.
I move to continue the public hearing for Ordinance 20-06, an ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code concerning subdivisions to 7:00 p.m. on September 1st, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So this item is continued, as was stated in the motion, we will be entertaining this on September 1st, 2020. Moving on to item 9.2, Resolution 20-18, a resolution accepting a bargain, and it is a bargain, and sale deed for Lincoln Commons, Belvedere, and Promenade Parks comprising a total of approximately 18 acres, and a bargain and sale deed for approximately 374 acres of open space from Rampart Range Metro District. Austin Good will be presenting this item. You got, you got the win tonight.
It is a win, and thanks to a lot of people, so we're really, really excited about this. I'm going to give you a bit of a skinnier version of the presentation tonight because we did bring this to council during your last study session in much more detail. So the project itself, this is a transfer property from Rampart Range Metro District and Ridge Gate Investments to the city of Lone Tree. It's largest property transfer in the city's history at 374 acres of open space, 18 acres of developed parks. We're really, really excited to be able to preserve this under the city's ownership, and it, these are amenities that all of our residents look to. We're one of the few metro area cities that actually has a bit of elevation gain in their open space, and so we're really, really glad that we're able to preserve that and preserve those views and preserve the recreational amenity that these are. The transfer includes Lincoln Commons Park, Don Bounce Park, which is a part of Lincoln Commons Park in a way, Promenade Park, Belvedere Park, and the open space. And one of the other great sweet deals of this project is our partners at South Suburban are going to be the ones that are actively managing these properties. Here's a map for your reference, and one of the really great things about these properties is they really do create a chain of parks and open space all along the Willow Creek Trail, and also the connections to the East-West Trail, which Douglas County recently extended through the open space over to the other side of I-25, so it really is a regional destination. Really neat partnership, we've alluded to this in the past, but the parks will be managed by South Suburban, we're really grateful for their partnership there as well as the open space. And then Rampart Range Metro District, the other great thing about this deal is within these open spaces, there's a lot of detention ponds and retaining walls that are necessary for the nest, for the surrounding development when those were constructed, and Rampart Range Metro District is going to continue to maintain those assets, and so none of that burden will fall on the city. Project goals, preserving and protecting open space, we talked about that. It's really keeping a lot more South Suburban tax dollars in the Ridge Gate area. They already have Prairie Sky Park and the Rec Center, but using those dollars to bring programming and maintenance to those parks is a really, really great asset, and also allows Rampart Range Metro District to focus on other priorities. And the benefits also continue, so there are some power lines that are strung up, you can actually see them from the arts center parking lot out here, that connect down further into XL's network, and because this will be under city's ownership, we're actually going to be able to tap into some undergrounding funds that our residents have been paying into a fund that can only be used for undergrounding, and luckily, we're really grateful here in the city that we don't have a lot of overhead power lines, and so when we have a chance to use those funds to underground lines, we're really, really excited about that, so that's going to be a really great benefit. South Suburban also provides a level of expertise in their park management, which we're really excited to take advantage of, and it also reduces a lot of confusion for residents as far as who does what. When you have multiple entities managing parks in a city, that can be really confusing as a resident, now that you know, just go to South Suburban. The documents, I'm sure you are all really, really grateful for the 200-page homework assignment that I gave you, but we'll go ahead and dive into what these documents actually are, what was in your packet. The main one that you're actually going to be approving tonight, if you choose, is the bargain and sale deeds, which is accepting those properties formally through that resolution from Rampart Range Metro District. Separately, Rampart Range Metro District completed a punch list. Those were improvements that we requested that they make within Belvedere Park primarily, but also in some of the other park spaces. Those, Belvedere Park in particular, is 12 or 13 years old at this point, so it was just time to make sure that some of those assets were maintained, and so we're really grateful that those were able to be brought up to code, or be brought up to SNF before they were transferred over to us. The Rampart Range Metro District and City of Lone Tree easement and maintenance agreements, these are what we're going to sign back with Rampart Range Metro District to give them permission to come back onto the property to maintain their aspects of the properties, so that's, that's what those are, and they also specify in further detail some of those weird little things as far as who, who's in charge of what, and those are actually going to be able to be approved and signed through SEP administratively. South Suburban and Rampart Range also have a separate IGA that they've already agreed to, and this reflects cost sharing agreements that they have. Currently, the way that the sites are metered, they're all tied into the same meters that other Rampart Range properties in the district are, and so this is a cost sharing back between those two entities. And then finally, the master IGA we already have with South Suburban, and that doesn't have to be amended, because when we approved that a couple years ago, this was already contemplated in those documents. More detail about each of those, one of the notes about the bargain and sale deeds is these do preserve easements in the open space for Rampart Range Metro District and Ridge Gate Investments, so that they can construct roads and utilities to access further development. And what we're talking about here is actually some land that's already called out within the PDD that we have agreed to as a city between us and the developer, outlining these areas as future residential. So as you can see, this urban, or future rural residential area, it's already slated to have around 261 homes built on that property. The open space surrounds it, and so in order for this transfer to happen, and in order for them to be able to access that land that has already been agreed to be developable, there needs to be some preservation of easements to allow them to get infrastructure and utilities over to those properties. The city, and big shout out to Linda and her team, Randall, for helping negotiate this. What we've been able to do is ensure that all utilities are undergrounded, their own, anything that's constructed through is only meant to serve the open space here, so there are limitations on what can be built there, but it's just something to know. And we talked about the punch list already, bring those parks up to code. And the easement and maintenance agreements, you know, just a couple small things are called out in there as far as utilities and lighting and who's responsible for what. There are also a couple enhanced planting areas that Rampart Range Metro District wanted to keep, they're above the South Suburban standard, and so Rampart Range is going to keep maintaining those planting areas, so there's a couple little logistical things in there. That IGA we already talked about, and Mayor, I know at the last meeting during the study session, you asked a question about how often, or how long is that for? The IGA automatically renews annually, so that is built in to their agreement, so I need to make sure we filled up on that. And then finally, that master IGA, very, very grateful for our partners at South Suburban that they agreed to take this on a little while ago. Okay, let's make it official. $25. Now, one thing I do need to clarify, it's not $25 for all of it, it's $25 per deed, and so there are two deeds, so it's actually going to be a $50 deal.
Oh, wait, that's a bait and switch.
Otherwise, the deed documents would say $12.50 on each of them, and that didn't feel right either.
I don't know, it works for me, saves money, but I like the part.
So if this is a deal breaker for council, I just wanted to make sure we were transparent about that.
I appreciate the transparency.
And I do need to be transparent as well, the original price was $10, and I negotiated them up. I'll take the, I'll take the hit on that one.
You're falling in stature by the minute.
We can move on to the next slide, we don't need to talk about that anymore. Any other questions?
Yeah, there you go, skip over the money. Any questions for, for Austin on this? I think I speak for all of council when we say there are a lot of people to thank, and I think during study session, you had a long, a long, long list of individuals. I know certainly I want to highlight the staff from the city of Lone Tree, you've done such a remarkable job, but also our partners at Rampart, Rampart Range Metro District for their generosity, and also just the tremendous partnership of South Suburban Parks and Recreation District because, you know, they bring tremendous value to the city of Lone Tree and access to our parks and open space, so I think that's wonderful. And, and Linda, just so, you are included, and you and your awesome team are included as, as far as I'm concerned, Lone Tree staff, so, but, but highlight, again, really great collaborative work by all of you, so thank you for that. That was my spiel, there were, I don't have any questions either, so we will look for the motion, and I'm going to see which lucky council member gets to read this exciting one. Come on.
I move to adopt Resolution 20-18, a resolution accepting a bargain and sale deed for Lincoln Commons, Belvedere, and Promenade Parks, compromising a total of approximately 18 acres, and a bargain and sale deed for approximately 374 acres of open space from Rampart Range Metropolitan District Number 1.
I think it's a unanimous second from all of council. Document that, Jay, figure it out, you can do it, I know. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Well, all right, wonderful, and again, this is something to be celebrated, in a year when we haven't had a lot to celebrate, this is a tremendous win for all of the partners, and most importantly, the residents and businesses that call Lone Tree home, so very excited about this one. There might be a city tweet later, I'm just saying, I don't know. Thanks, Austin. All right, the fun's over, moving on, administrative matters, back to business and the business of the city. Kristin Baumgartner, our deputy city attorney, this is Ordinance 20-07, amending Article 3 of Chapter 4 of the City of Lone Tree's Municipal Code concerning sales tax and economic nexus for retailers or vendors without physical presence in the state, and this is first reading. Welcome, mouthful, I said it all for you, don't say it again, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council, and I am very excited to be bringing this topic to you tonight, and hopefully it'll help to bring some additional revenue into the city long term. Next slide, please. We've talked a lot over the last couple years about different things related to sales tax, but really the focus tonight is talking about our sales tax code and changing some of the definitions and provisions to allow for remote sellers. And so just a little bit of background, is the last several years, there's been a lot of changing dynamics around physical presence or nexus, and previously, unless a company had physical presence in an area, they had no tax liability. And so back in 2018, the Wayfair ruling by the United States Supreme Court stated that a retailer's obligation to collect sales tax is no longer just based on a retailer's physical presence, and this was a really big case for this whole country, and really the, that became due to the fact of internet sales and kind of the proliferation of that becoming so popular. So with internet sales now, physical presence rule creates So, with internet sales now, physical presence rule creates that there can be economic nexus as well as physical presence. And why this is important is really if there isn't these two areas to look at, it creates an unfair taxing situation for in-state businesses and it really gives a tax benefit for out-of-state businesses. So, that was really one of the main reasons why Wayfair was reviewed and ended up changing that physical nexus is no longer the only criteria. Next slide, please. Other things why this is important as a municipality is that these companies now that are delivering tangible personal property and products into our city through internet sales rely on the same city services that our physical retailers do. And in a way, it somewhat burdens our local government with our police powers, with infrastructure, with utility providers, et cetera. And prior to the Wayfair ruling, there wasn't really a way to tax internet sellers the same way. So, another kind of justification is this, is that failure to tax remote sellers does also kind of create an incentive for some businesses to avoid physical presence in a state, which can result in fewer jobs and increases the share of taxes on consumers who shop locally. So, because of all these reasons, this proposed change to our ordinance has the goal to address all these issues as well as to continue to join the simplification efforts on standardized definitions through the state. Next slide, please. So, back in 2019, the state was a little ahead of local municipalities in this, but the state really needed to take a stance on this first. And House Bill 191240 addressed the Wayfair ruling for the state. And that really did two main things. Effective June 1st of last year, it developed economic nexus as being a trigger for tax remittance. And in the state code, it says that over $100,000 in taxable transactions in a year is what provides economic nexus. And this was consistent with the Wayfair ruling to keep those provisions the same. Then on October 1st, 2019, the state also requires now marketplace facilitators to start collections for marketplace sellers. And what that really means is a marketplace facilitator is what we all think of when we think of Amazon. And this requires that Amazon not only remits for sales directly from Amazon, but they are responsible to collect and remit for anyone who does business through their platform. And so, that also is a big change, but also takes some of the burden away from those smaller businesses to have to have that responsibility. Next slide, please. Additionally, House Bill 191240, in addressing those things, one thing it did not address was anything related to home rule municipalities, it only addressed for the state. And so, at that time, our home rule jurisdictions all committed to each other that we would stay with voluntary compliance and not enforce this new ruling by the state until a single point of remittance system was in place. Because that's another key thing with the Wayfair ruling is that we can put undue burden on these remote sellers. And so, we've been waiting for that to happen. And now, with the state sales and use tax system, which is called Suits, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in the next agenda item, this undue burden criteria for the Commerce Clause, we feel that we're protected from that if we have a single point of remittance. And so, now we're looking at ways that home rule municipalities can now follow House Bill 191240 and address these remote sellers. Next slide, please. So, our specific ordinance that's in front of you tonight, ordinance 20-07, does three different things. First, it amends definitions for two things in our code. One, for the definition of engaged in business in the city. And second, for the definition retailer vendor. And really, it just expands those definitions to include remote sellers and marketplace facilitators. Next slide, please. And then, we had to add several new definitions that have never existed in our code before. Those things include economic nexus, which just refer back to the state definition of that. Marketplace, marketplace facilitator, marketplace seller and multi-channel seller. And really, the only difference between a marketplace seller and a multi-channel seller is if someone exclusively uses a marketplace facilitator, they're a marketplace seller. If they use a marketplace facilitator but also have their own personal website, then they're a multi-channel seller. So, similar, it just kind of depends on if they have their own online platform. Next slide, please. And then, lastly, it adds a new subsections D and E under Section 4320 of our code. And really, all this does is it establishes that these types of retailers are required to collect or remit sales tax to the city. And secondly, it provides auditing abilities for the city to audit marketplace facilitators. So, all of this was done in great coordination drafting this with CML. CML really took the lead drafting a standardized ordinance to help us. And we took that and with the help of our city attorney, reviewed that. We made some great recommendations. Linda did change things slightly, which I really appreciated. She did a great job reviewing that and has been a huge help in making sure that this was all ready for, to bring to council. So, with that, I'm open to any questions and we're excited that this is finally here. It's kind of taken a long time to get to this place, so thank you.
Well, we appreciate your leadership in guiding the city through this and also Linda as well. I mean, I think this is an important next step for us, so thanks. So, council, is there any question? I know we've been talking about this for a while, but any?
No questions.
Any questions from anybody? A lot of gratitude, a lot of gratitude, not a lot of questions. So, with the "I don't have questions," we'll move on to the motion.
I move to adopt ordinance 20-07, an ordinance amending Article Three of Chapter Four of the City of Lone Tree Municipal Code Concerning Sales Tax and Economic Nexus for Retailers or Vendors Without Physical Presence in the State upon first reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Kristin, but you're not done yet. Resolution 20-19, a resolution approving an agreement regarding Department of Revenue Sales and Use Tax Software. And again, a little bit of a follow-on to the first item, so please.
Perfect, thank you. So, this item, now that we are in the process of amending our code, which the ordinance will come back to council for a public hearing and second reading in two weeks, but we also now would like to have council consideration to allow us to participate in the new system that the state has developed. Next slide, please. And one more, thank you. So, as a reminder, with the sales tax simplification efforts that have been going on in the state, Senate Bill 1906 was passed to develop an electronic sales and use tax simplification system for sales tax collection and a GIS database system to maintain jurisdictional boundaries. Two contracts were awarded last year in reaction to Senate Bill 1906, and they went to two vendors, one called MuniRev for the Single Point of Remittance Portal and one for TTR for the GIS database and rate taxability matrix. That's a mouthful. Next slide. So, really good news on Senate Bill 1906 is that this project did come in under budget and on time. The state did do a controlled launch of the sales and use tax system on May 6th, and both systems are anticipated to be live by the end of the summer. They are wanting to have a critical mass of home rule municipalities participating before they go fully live with the system. And I kind of have an update where we're at with that on the next slide. So, currently, you can see the different percentages. 30% of home rule municipalities have actually signed the agreement and are onboarding with the software. And about a month ago, when I came in study session, this with council, it was at 17%. So, in a month's time, it's almost doubled. So, that's really great progression. 34% have started the process for approval. And what that means is that it's in the process of going through kind of their legislative bodies to go before their city councils are board. So, that takes different amounts of time for different municipalities, but that's great that another 34% are in the process actively. Another 34% are reviewing and evaluating the system internally, so that's at the staff level. And then, there's only 2% that have said openly that they're really not looking at this right now and that they're waiting till they're fully staffed as they've had economic impacts with COVID. Next slide.
Kristin, before you go on, where is the city in those percentages? Which box are we in? Are we in the legislative?
We're in the legislative process, so that's second.
Right, and then, you said a majority. Are they waiting till there's just over 50% and then they'll fully, it will be fully live? Is that your understanding?
They keep using the phrase "critical mass," but I'm hopeful that it's around 50%.
Okay.
I can follow up on that.
Thank you.
So, we mentioned these last month of the study session, but just quickly, some pros to joining this agreement. It does allow businesses with multiple locations, one place to file their returns, and we feel that this will be a lot easier for those businesses that cross jurisdictional boundaries in-state. It also has greatly increased the GIS system that is available to our businesses. It has the same capabilities of the city's own online system with multiple payment options for taxpayers. It's very minimal cost where we will pay just a dollar per transfer fee, so we don't anticipate that being more than $20 per month. Next slide, please. We will receive funds daily after the payment is settled. We'll have full access to information provided on the tax return and several system-generated reports. We anticipate greater compliance, both with the online retailers, obviously, because we'll have this new platform, but also we've heard from local businesses that sometimes they don't always follow all the rules of local remittance just because of the complexities. They kind of pick the bigger ones and wait to get audited on the smaller ones. So, we're hopeful that we'll see greater compliance all around. And then, also, we can cancel at any time with a 90-day notice. So, if there would be any issues once we did go with the system, we have that ability as well. Some limitations and challenges. Right now, the system can only be used to file sales and use tax. And so, some of our taxpayers who have lodging or admissions tax will have to still file in another manner, but they're working to at least include lodging tax on this platform because that's a pretty common tax that municipalities have. So, we'll continue to advocate for that. There is an additional cost if we want a direct interface with our accounting system at some point, which we'll continue to evaluate kind of the added staff time of reconciliation, but also want to see again how much money is flowing through this initially, so we don't recommend pursuing that at this time. And then, it will add some additional reconciliation for our internal finance staff. And lastly, our customer service will be provided by an external party, and in this circumstance, it's the Colorado Department of Revenue. Again, we'll also assist our businesses however we can, but ultimately, they have the interface with the system. Another thing that did come up that I didn't put on the slide, but I wanted to address is that there are some limited liability clauses in the agreement. And there was a question at the last study session about what that means. And in talking with our city attorney, we still feel that if there would be negligence through fraud, that that still would be a criminal charge. And even though we waived a lot of liability in the agreement, that there would still be some bearing if it was a fraud issue. And I don't know, if you have any other questions on that, Linda's happy to answer those as well. Okay, next slide. So, staff recommendation is that we do believe the benefits of the system do outweigh the limitations and challenges with implementing, and we are really excited to continue to advocate for our sales tax simplification while also advocating for home rule authority and think this is a great compromise and a great product that's come out of the work we've done the last several years. So, if there's questions, I'm happy to answer those, and then we have a motion. Oh, sorry, forgot one slide, next step. So, once, if this is approved, we would send it to the Colorado Department of Revenue and start the onboarding process with them. It will, they said, probably take between 30 and 60 days to fully get onboarded and implemented. And then, in the meantime, we'd start developing some communication with our taxpayers on filing options so that as soon as it was ready to go live, we could start using the system.
Great. Okay, any questions for either our city attorney or our deputy city manager on this process?
No.
Okay. Again, we've been fully briefed in multiple council sessions and even study sessions, excuse me, on this. So, I think we're excited to move forward and get to going. So, I will look for a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 20-19, a resolution approving an agreement regarding Department of Revenue Sales and Use Tax Software of the Suits System.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And again, Kristin, I know with all the work you did, and I don't think you're off the hook yet with the state task force. So, again, we very much appreciate it and the work above and beyond your responsibilities at the city, so thank you. All right, moving on to our last formal item is Resolution 20-20, a resolution appointing and reappointing members of the Lone Tree Youth Commission. And our city clerk, Jay Robb, is going to introduce this one.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I better hurry because my notes say that we end at 7:45.
Oh.
We're kind of at the end of an era, if you will, with the departure of Noel and Ava, you know, moving on and graduating, and Laura and Julia already being eligible for reappointment. And then, with the council's recent passage of Resolution 20-16, you all decided that it would be okay to increase the number of youth commissioners from seven to nine. And given those changes, Mayor Protam Brunick and Councilmember Carpenter have been very busy interviewing youth commission candidates. They interviewed seven two weeks ago, and the recommendation is listed in the resolution. And the new appointees would be Catalina Cologne, Rex Bordelaid, Riley Hamilton and Sarah Pashke. And then, of course, staff is also recommending that Laura Palito and Julia Reigret also be reappointed. And I'll defer to Kathy and Jay to speak to the process of interviewing those candidates and the merits of those that are being recommended for appointment.
Thanks, Jay. And I want to thank our Mayor Protam and council member Carpenter for doing the heavy lifting with the interviews because it's hard, because I know these kids are all remarkable. So, the rest of council appreciates your good work. So, which one of you is going to start?
I'll start, and then Jay can. He's as close to it as anyone. I just want to say, this is the first time for any of our commissions, we've had that many people to interview at once, and they were all fabulous. I mean, really all fabulous. We had such a great time. They all performed so well, given those video interviews, and everyone showed up and, you know, were really engaged. They were just a delight. And we really wish all of them through this process could join right now, but we're very hopeful that those of them that were not selected will come back to us because we know every year, things change and we have an opportunity for each and every one of them. It really just was a great, a great process. And Austin, you're going to just dig the folks that we chose for you. So, super excited about them and really grateful that. It reminded me too how important this commission is for us as a group because we're all just a bit older than that. And sitting with those kids and really seeing their energy and their ideas, and it reminds me that there's just so much good that comes from having their energy as part of our overall initiatives here, and I'm just grateful to have been part of it.
Yeah, and we have renewed confidence in the future, for sure. So, as we talked about in the last meeting, it was just great talent. And I'm pretty confident that the three who did not move on in the process will still stay engaged. We encourage them to look at Team Court. Several of them are younger too, so they will have opportunities in the future as well. So, I think they'll definitely stay engaged because they certainly are worthy of it. Just a point to note that two of them were actually the finalists for the Outstanding Youth of Lone Tree themselves. And it was through that process that they were encouraged to throw their hat in the ring for this, for the commission, so. So, great team. It was a lot of fun interviewing them all, really, really professional, so.
Well, thank you guys again. And Kathy, get used to it, I think one year we had 14 planning commission interviews.
Yeah.
So, watch out.
In my time, we've.
So, all right, which, I think we're ready for the motion, and I will look to one of you two.
I move to adopt Resolution 20-20, a resolution approving and reappointing members of Lone Tree Youth Commission.
And I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, and I'm excited to know the two that got reappointed and the four new voices for youth in our city, so that's awesome. So, unless something has changed, it hasn't, I think we're going to just, I'm going to make some brief council comments because we cannot let this day go by, and I hope you all know the answer to this question. What happened 100 years ago today?
Yeah, 19.
Woo-hoo.
Women's right.
Women got the right to vote. So, there is the majority of us sitting at this table right at this very moment, probably wouldn't be here had that not important event happened 100 years ago. And I don't think we should let this day go by without acknowledging the 19th Amendment. So, thanks to all who advocated and worked very, very hard for a very long time to ensure that that happened in our country. And I'm very proud of the fact that Colorado, if it wasn't the first, was one of the first to allow, was it the first?
I think it was the second. Wyoming was first.
Darn that Wyoming. They get Yellowstone and the vote. But anyway, so I did want to acknowledge that today. And the other thing I want to acknowledge is Jay, Rob and his team with the liquor licensing work because you guys have been busy with COVID, and I really think this is great. And I want to just let you know that how important I think this is. that, how important I think this is, that our business community be engaged and advised and updated, particularly in the time of COVID, with everything that's going on. And I would certainly think this would qualify for CARES funding, because a lot of the work that you are doing on this is directly related to laws that were enacted because of COVID, and the liquor delivery takeout rules, the last call order, the no drinking in vehicles. So I would, if you haven't already looked at that, I would encourage you to. So again, and it's really good work. So thank you. And with that, we're adjourned.